Use versus having your soul.
I'm just trying to think ballpark.
Paying the tickets that go through Vendini.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything does through Vendini.
Yeah, so we can get the number, but I'm saying it's.
It's over 20.
That's what I'm saying. So to me, I've always thought of it for also, you know, the air conditioning fund. Because every time I go to a show.
You're paying.
You're paying fees. And, you know, so to me, to offset these increases and that type of, I just think it's a good way to, it's not a tax increase that obviously everyone's affected. It's a use increase where anyone's using the theater would pay an extra dollar every time, or whatever the number is.
They already are. You know that.
They are. But, you know, I don't know like what our fees look like compared to other places' fees. And if it's something that we can do to offset some of this, and, you know, I think if we can make this semi-revenue neutral, it's definitely a number here.
And just so you know, we have fees left at the end of each season. And sometimes those go in revenue, or you will put them into.
Capital. You never lose them.
Right.
Anything, any revenues, or even those fees, they don't lose them at the end of the year. What goes to fund balance will transfer to the building fund, the building maintenance, theater building maintenance. Because they were generated by the theater.
So right now, the fees, I mean, I've purchased a lot of tickets, but the fees are called what? When you, when the customer looks at them?
It'll say fee on there, but that fee right now, some of that is Vendini. So we figured it out. So because we're being charged by our ticketing service. So there, Vendini's taking a percentage of that. But every purchase, there is a slight amount more, and that builds up throughout the year.
Round up.
Yep, we round up. And by the end of the year, then she moves that into a pot.
Once we pay Vendini and any other credit card fees, we keep the credit card fees separate from theater. So sometimes it's over, under. So at least we have a little cushion there. At the end, we clear it out. I don't think it's a huge amount. I don't recall, five thousand, something like that.
Exactly.
So the fee on it is like, two dollars or something now, something like that?
Depends on what you're purchasing.
Correct. And then, and it's essentially thought of as it goes to Vendini, and it goes to the credit card, but there's a little leftover. But you're saying.
Add a little bit more.
Right.
Would it go in that same line? You just bump it up?
We could do that. But we could actually try to target.
You could call it.
Or we could even, as you say, break it out separately, if you want, I'm sure.
Greg's salary fee?
Yeah.
Greg's health care fund?
Is it his salary's contingent?
So to me, it's just kind of a way that we're, you know, I think what we're doing is we're increasing the use of the theater, which I think is fantastic. And we're obviously offering a wide array of things. So to me, if, you know, almost like your success brings in more revenue directly, like, you know, a direct correlation with the ticket sales.
It's kind of like commission.
Exactly. It's one of those, I don't want to, we don't want to make it onerous. But, you know, I think if it's two dollars, and it's, then it goes to 285, you know, to make up a number. You know, to me, that's not egregious. And I know, like, when I, it's amazing to me when I look at the fees, like, oh, it's a hundred dollar ticket. And then there's the convenience fee of five dollars, and the ticket fee of four.
Yep.
Facility fee of two, that, you know.
Make someone walk to the theater and buy your ticket.
Yeah, right.
And people complain about.
Two dollars.
Yeah, people complain about our fees, and I always think the same thing. I'm like, do you go to a Broadway show? See what you're paying in fees? Our 240 is nothing compared to that.
Exactly. I think it's a great idea, Brian.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, and there will be complaints.
Yes, which is, you can just not harm to me.
Or they could have less.
Well, yeah, there will be complaints.
No, but you just said that's what's required to keep it running.
Plus, they are all sacks.
Yeah.
But it's just something, maybe, maybe you can even think about what makes sense. Like, look at the actual ticket numbers, certainly something we have, and maybe come back with a proposal even. You know, and I think if it's not a dollar this year, maybe it's, you know, sixty cents this year, and next year it goes to eighty. Like, maybe we scale it in, depending on the number of tickets and that kind of thing. So I think it's something we can come up with a fairly good estimate. And if we can offset a chunk of this, I think that'd be fantastic. You know, and.
It's so nominal, right?
I think so. It's usually.
And end up over that is a pay raise.
There you go.
Bonus paid at the end.
Well, and you just mentioned revenue, and I just wanted to say real quickly about that. You know, so far this year, we brought in.
Oh, that was on there?
It had it on there.
Forty, forty thousand.
Yeah. But in addition to that, we have an outstanding balance still coming in of about 24,000. There will be another money, because this year, we started the 3% of the box office take that we do. So we did change our rules this year. And when somebody runs from us, we're taking 3% of the box office. That will be about another 6K through the year.
What was it before?
We never took anything before. We never took a dime of a box office. And so this year, it's really put the onus back on us, on me, to get out there and market that. Anybody that comes in, I want to help fill your house now, because I'm also taking some money from that. And, and I've been reporting back to the commission that it's definitely, it's showing we're bringing, we're bringing in more from even our arts partners, our rentals this year than we have in previous years, just in this new, this new scales.
Didn't Common Ground already divide up? When they, when Common Ground uses the theater?
It's, I have a slightly different rental agreement with them, because they're kind of a co-pro.
Right.
So we already do it differently with Common Ground. The other thing is, is you all aware that the commission has been producing so much more now, which is incredible. That's why we're going to meeting now, because I'm talking to each of the producers about how we produce. But one thing we, we've never done is paid rent. All the money they bring in goes back into revenue. And we had discussed this at an offsite. The commission, I mean, the commission pays for things beyond what they're producing. They paid for that offsite meeting that, that we had, which was a really great meeting. But even, I had said to them, even if they paid $500 per event they put in there, that would have been another $5,500 in this year's revenue. So one of the things we're going to discuss is for the 11 events they do next year, there will be, there will be, that goes back into our revenue line. So we are going to put that in the budget for each event. 500 is to go back into the revenue. So we're going to start to see in the revenue line, money coming in from the commission produced events, and not just looking at, oh, well, there is another chunk of money over here that the commission is making. That is sort of like revenue. It is revenue coming in for the theater. It's just not going into the same line. So I just want to point that out.
Right. Reporting it differently.
Correct.
Right.
So can we go back to the, we left off, that's.
I'm sure.
123. So that's the additional box office.
Additional box offices, uh, for, for staffing. It's box office, it's marketing, and it's, it's technical hours throughout the year to, for hourly work. These next things you see are transfers that were on a line item that I asked Bryn to move into other places. So that's what she's done. She's moved from the facilities we're seeing, she put into supplies from the garage rental, which we no longer have. She put into repairs. A custodial increase, as I mentioned, they raised their rates on us, so I need to try to raise, get more money into that, into 451. And then 456 is where I was discussing the, when things come up as flame retardant curtains, or buying a new site, or fixing, emergency fixing of the stage because water's causing a buckle. I just wanted to see if we could get some extra money into 456.
And just being a little silly, where's the water coming from? I know it's going from the sky and then onto the roof.
Two, I mean, two places, we had a roofer come out and look, and it's, some of it is coming around from the bottom of the clock tower. But Jimmy also said to me again the other day, that he's gone up, and the dome itself on the clock tower, water comes through there. So it's coming down the clock tower. It's finding its way through the rafters. And for, for a couple of years, it was just one spot. And we knew exactly where the spot was. We knew to put nothing there when there was a rainstorm, and we had a bucket waiting. It's now found its way to five spots across the stage. It's, it's a, it's a major issue that we do need, the village needs to, to correct, because we just put $70,000 worth of lighting, new lighting equipment hanging in that theater. And this water's just going to keep finding new places to, to come down onto the stage.
And I assume this, like, their capital budget will be looking at it?
Yeah, we have to. We, the clock tower needs work. And it seems kind of strange to say that, since we just, well, I say just.
Ten years ago, right?
It's a little more than 10 years. But yeah, it's, so, but it needs work.
I mean, is it as simple as flashing?
No, there's rotted, there's rotted areas of wood.
Jeez.
Yeah, it's more than that.
So five more buckets moved.
Yes.
It's gonna walk around.
Five, five, fifty seven buckets.
I bother Larry, I'm like, oh, here's a picture now of five buckets, like.
We haven't, we've only done, you know, sort of emergency reviews of it. We haven't done a comprehensive analysis of what has to be repaired. So I have no idea about cost yet.
Every rainstorm, I just hold my breath.
Go.
Because of work.
That's gonna look like.
I've got to have snow then, right?
I don't know, I haven't worked on.
Then it melts.
I mean, would it be like, whoever was looking at the engineering for the renovation of the building?
I mean, I, there's, we've worked with roofing professionals in the past. We worked with one most recently on the firehouse roof.
Did not, we had to say.
Not a contractor, but a consultant, you know, to oversee the final set of repairs there. So, but there's, there's other options, in short.
So some capital budget.
Yep.
Sure.
I won't get forgotten.
Plastic over for now.
Need something.
So the Barrow Street garage is gone.
It's gone.
And.
So be it.
But something, you are having a change in the revenue, though, no?
We are having a change in the revenue.
Yeah. Because it says no change.
Well, I didn't, we didn't.
Increase the revenue.
We didn't, we didn't increase it at this time.
Correct.
Always.
So we'll see how it goes.
Right.
Right, 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 right. Maybe we can put the increase in revenue from the, my, my fees.
Well, I was thinking some of it, because it offsets, obviously. It offsets some of the total budget deficit.
Do you have an idea how much?
I'm projecting it, and this year's probably going to be around 74.
We'll come in this year, right, on target.
Yeah.
So for next year, if you're going to be adding a fee, I could put in, I could increase the revenue.
So why don't, why don't we push it back on you guys to come up with a recommendation on the fee, and see what you, see what you think makes sense.
Okay.
You know, look around, see what other, you know, Tarrytown's doing, or whatever. And, uh, and see if it sells.
And then for the self-produced items, if that's, because I assume that's self-produced, the net result of your self-productions goes into a separate kind of.
Right.
So if you're going to be pulling 500 out of that, and for each production to be brought into revenue, that should be accounted for here.
Correct.
Right.
Right. So I don't know how that decision-making process is going. But when that's decided upon, then that's the bottom.
Kind of.
Any kind of a side. So what's the annual?
It's actually 5500.
That's 500.
It'd be about $5,500.
So that's, that's 500 right there.
The sum that are free.
Well, no, that's okay. Just tell us. You know, we're not, we're not saying everything has to be this. Just tell us what you expect to do.
Yeah, which I think that'd be a great goal.
And as always, I'm always looking for new things to bring in that are not, are regular things, that are, how do I put this? That are things that will, that will bring in more revenue. Because, of course, we have a different scale of who pays what. If you're, if you're a regular group coming in, you're going to pay one thing. If you're a nonprofit, it's another. And if you're one of our existing arts partners, or Irvington Group, you pay another. So we already have a group that came to us next year, the weekend before Halloween. They want to do, they're, they're doing a musical version of Sleepy Hollow. And they wanted to do it here forever. And they're finally coming. I'm like, we're not producing it. They're renting from us to produce it that weekend. So I'm like, excellent.
That was revenue.
Come, come, come to your sleepy hall.
Yeah.
Seems big.
So, uh, do you offer, or charge, I guess, do you, for additional marketing? Like, for anything going into the email, or, or whatever? There's a certain amount that you do anyways, right, because of the calendar. But is there additional marketing you can offer as, for a fee?
For a fee? What we've done right now is if somebody is a sponsor, so it's not, that doesn't go into revenue. Is if somebody is sponsoring something that we are producing, then part of their sponsorship package, we offer them certain marketing elements of that.
Right.
We offer them some seats. We offer them, there's, there's a list of things they get in marketing as part of that. But we've never just gone to someone else and said, hey, we'll throw your logo on our email blast all the time. I haven't gone down that road yet. We could. I know me, if I go to a website and I'm bombarded by too many of those side ads, I start to get annoyed. But that may just be me.
No, not just.
It's just, you know, yeah, it's just expensive. That's the only way. I don't know, for instance, this group coming in that wants to do the Sleepy Hollow thing, what would you probably do for them?
Well, for.
Marketing wise?
Marketing wise, I mean, we're going to, they're going to be in our email blast. We're not going to, I'm not going to take on their marketing for them. But they'll be in our email blast. They will be on our website. We would handle their ticketing. Of course, I would share with them and say, hey, here's who we go after for press releases. Here's my press release list. You write your own press release and put it out there. So I can help them in that way. And they're already out there marketing. I mean, they started following our Instagram right away. And I'm watching them throughout the months, saying, let me just stay on top of them and see what they do, and how big or small they may be.
You know, Mark, one of the things that I think you're, you're talking around, is that there are, there are clear other revenue sources. We have a limited amount of human power, both in Greg, and the commission, and the hourly employees, to be able to really full force, you know, go after these lines of possible revenue.
I mean.
They still have the person power.
I would imagine, yeah. I understand that totally. I'm just wondering, you know, if any of these, in the future, become something that looks like it's actually another good revenue stream, then it's, you know, quite conceivable it could be worth additional efforts.
Higher than something.
Yeah, or.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's, I'm sure you're going to continually think about that kind of stuff.
I do. Marketing is big. I mean, it's a whole, you know, idea of marketing. And it is, you know, something we would love to do in a bigger way than we do it now.
How does the notion of trying to put together three or four shows for Matheson Park, you know, that's been thrown around? Mark, I've heard about it from some different sources. How does that impact your operations?
Well, we're still at the beginning stage of that. What, what's happened is, and I haven't talked to Joe again. Joe was having the idea. One of our commissioners was wanting to do this whole summer idea. I put the two of them together. I've talked to that commissioner. And I know it's, it's three separate things they're wanting to do in the summer. Though, I, like I said, I need to speak to Joe directly, because what I hear is they kind of want us to handle the artistic end of it, while he handles all of the logistics. So it's going to be somewhere, of course, for the summer. It will not just be on me. It will be on commission, which is a volunteer group. But they will be involved in that as well. Or it will be this one commissioner setting up a committee that she will work with. But I will definitely be working alongside of her.
But the setup, tear down, audio, whatever else is all, is all parks.
Well, no, it's, that's something that's going to be us. Because, like, Ryan, my tech director and I were already discussing. He's like, look, let's, I need to know what size stage Joe's talking about. And then he can, and then Ryan can come up with, here's what we could rent lighting-wise from Altman, or here's what we could say that we can pull from a theater, since we're closed this summer, and use our own board for such a thing, and take our board out there. Which means.
Getting.
Getting, you know, Ryan and hired hourly to do such kind of work.
Right, okay, good.
Because that, those are all going to be free events. So it's all going to be about sponsorships, to, to pay for that kind of thing. So there was going to be no ticketing. I think we need to make sure and somehow get, if we're going to offer something that large, we need these emails of people come. You, you want to gather some kind of information from these patrons coming out to these parks.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to get anything, since they're not buying tickets. You're not going to even find out who these people are. So part of my thing is, I want to work on is making sure we're, we're gathering that data. And trying to get sponsors to, to pay for, for that kind of endeavor.
What's that, the rain thing? The outdoor that Joe is very knowledgeable about. But, you know, if you've got a stage and hired a group to do a play, you know, I don't, I'm going to need to talk you or Joe about this. But it's, it's a real homework.
Great. Well, do your homework, get us our, get us our fee revenue.
Okay.
Otherwise, thanks. And we're all three with a pleasure.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I guess I'll be here. I guess I'll stay here.
It's not the regular year.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. I thought I sent the wrong video. Like, the next.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye. Other. Say goodbye to the other.
The other has left.
The other is.
Library is its own town. So you guys have a little.
I have to ask either, but sometimes I do. But anyway.
It's all right. It's a good joke. They're, they got, they got a good sense here, Mark.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
All right.
How do you want to handle this? Because I thought I would give you some uplifting statistics about 2017.
You could use a library year, running from June 2017.
Is this in here somewhere?
No, no. I just, I handbrake this.
Okay, good, okay.
Yesterday with the snow, I just separated.
And I grabbed it.
And grabbed it.
Oh, good, good.
Um, the day of 2018. We had 557 programs at the library, which brought in 11,003 attendings, which I think is the highest that we had.
Eleven, three?
Yes.
They pushed it over.
Um, well, I, I told Carolyn, if she had just gotten four more people, she would have broken 8,000. But.
Children.
Uh, children and adults.
But the, oh, I see. So the 8,000, of the, of the 11, eight is in the realm of.
Children's.
With adults.
Right.
Programs.
Okay. So we had 197 adult programs, which brought in almost 2,900 people. Fifteen average per program. We had 330 children's programs, which brought in 4,600 children and about 3,400 adults. 14 average children and 10 averaging adults. And we also got a new young adult librarian who's been terrific, half the previous year, Linda Moser. And I have to say, she's made a tremendous difference. Even in the first six months, she had 24 programs and 125 attendings, which the young adult area has been very, very difficult.
What's the age range for the YA young adult that you're?
Well, actually, we've sort of tweaked it a little younger. So it's tweens and teens. So it's approximately 12 through 17.
Isn't there some adult who comes to one of the.
Well, some of the programs that she's done, some of these very elaborate programs, she has these wonderful, like, the, the craft programs, she does like making a Christmas wreath out of old books. Where she do, like, folded the pages, and they into like cones, and then just you have boom, boom, boom. We've, we've had adults express interest, and she has not turned the wheel.
Young is hard. Young is hard, yes.
Okay. We don't, we don't ask for ID at the door.
Right.
So that, that's pretty exciting. Some of our adult program highlights, this is run by Pam Bernstein, in addition to the regular book clubs and such, yoga, memoir writing, a compost demo that drew 40 people, salsa and Latin dance lessons, romance in the movie series, learning to paint the style of famous artists, travel logs with Tony McSee, and a vocal workshop with Dominique Halston. And one of the things that she's just started this year, which is already creating a waiting list, is Bridge. So we have 16 people signed up to come consistently for Bridge. And we have a waiting list of.
Seven people.
Seven people. So.
Those people will have to operate again.
So that'll, that'll be great. Carolyn Galloway has been the children's librarian for several years, and she's terrific. The Stuffed Animals sleepover is always a big hit. And it's on YouTube, if you want to look at it. She does pajama storytimes, and storytimes in the park. She started cupcake wars that year. And you, I think, were one of the first.
No, I wasn't one of the first, but.
I think you, 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 Brian was one of them.
I was there, I was there this past year, yeah.
Okay, so you were first.
I know we couldn't get them. I was very disappointed.
Yeah, no, it's.
That's why I never went back.
I would have, I would have felt bad about it.
And of course, the very popular Touch a Truck Day in Waukegan, which is probably about the biggest single that we have.
That we have, yes. It draws, you know, it's in the hundreds. I mean, we have lots of children coming in with their parents, with their older siblings, you know, kids with their siblings and everybody. But actually, if I could just add a quick story about that, um, we, interesting story. After, about two weeks after the last truck day, a small, a child here in Irvington had to go to the hospital, an emergency, a coma, had to go to the hospital, and was not scared to go in the ambulance, because he said, oh, I know you from truck day. So it actually really, you know, it provides, I mean, not only is it fun, but it actually does provide a service, that the kids get to meet people from the police department, from the fire department, from the, from IBAC, from, from, from the GPW. I mean, they get to know these people. And, and so, because they meet them and get to climb in the truck. And. They climb in the truck. And they love to deactivate the horn, to the horn a lot.
That's great. A few other things that we, that were new in that year were, we had Garden Dedication in memory of Pam Strawn. We had a lot of public support for that. And actually, there was a competition about fundraising, and another library won and split it with us in, in memory of Pam.
That's just the library system, sort of, had this sort of thing where we, where all libraries were trying out this new service. And we had to put, you use it for something, and I use it for the, for Brown's Garden. And we came in second, but the other library took 100, so they favored, you know.
That's right.
They, they loved that. So they just actually split the, the money for us.
And what's nice about the garden is now we have the whole Pollinator Pathway project going. And so the garden and the program room are focus of a lot of the events that they're planning, which is also terrific. We also started sponsoring programs with the Historical Society, which is great, because we've got the space. And, you know, it goes throughout quite a few people. We also had Rego auctions come in for an appraisal day, which they had 64 appointments. And as of last September, they had turned over $3,237 to the friends.
Wow.
As from proceeds from various items that were auctioned off. So we're definitely doing that again. It's, it's like an easy way for them to, to make money.
That's great.
People love, you know, coming in. And even if they don't want to sell it, they want to hear about it, you know, know more about it. So that was a great day.
So the income comes if they sell things through it? Is that how, and then you get a percentage?
The friends get a percentage.
Of course, the friends get a percentage. Okay. Of any items that are identified at that appraisal day. Basically, when you have the items appraised, you can say if you want, put them for auction. And the Rego, the Rego people take them away, work them into their catalogs, and then over the course of the next year, they, if they auction them. And what company is it called?
Rego.
R-E-E-O. They're in.
New Jersey.
New Jersey. So Lumington, I think.
Yeah.
I was just.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah. I guess they're pretty reputable.
Yeah.
They paid you, they paid.
Um, I think the, the big item that I heard about was a ladder signed by Alexander Hamilton.
Yes, that I read about.
That was very big. But people consign jewelry and, and other items as well. We also started having a student music recital with local teachers in April that year, when that drew 68 people, and was extremely popular. We had three teachers come in, and they each had an hour. So that we'll be doing again. And of course, our wonderful trustee concert series, which is sort of on hold this year. We have one at the end of the month, because Trish Waters retired. So we're looking for somebody else who can fill her shoes, which is going to be hard. But we do.
I love those concerts.
Well, this is going to be, this is a really, this is a Baroque music concert that's related to the people that did Rebel.
Rebel.
Rebel, yes.
Rebel, sorry. It's, it's sort of, they have multiple groups that they have, and this is one of their groups.
They're pretty 24. They're 24.
Oh, wow, it's 24, yeah.
So, so that was really terrific. The other thing that we are able to offer is a lot of free space between the program room and the tiffany reading room for village departments and village committees to meet. And the school budget meeting is there. And the high school Latin club meets there. Irvington School teachers have training sessions there. So, and we also rent out the room to various organizations for meetings, such as some of the condom boards and blowout boards and things of that nature. So we have a small revenue streaming from that. The other thing I just wanted to highlight is we're getting back on track with our building issues. Things were kind of at a standstill for well over a year with the delay between Workforce Housing Group taking over and the fact that Grayston and Prestige didn't want to repair anything. So I will say that working with Workforce Housing Group has, is going pretty well, I would say. Some of the workmanship that's done has not been done well. But John Warren at Workforce is, we're than willing to have them come back and do it again until they get it right. So we're trying to get them to focus on doing it right the first time so that we don't have to keep repainting the railing in front of the library with the wrong primer. So...
Was that what happened?
It's supposed to be dark rather than white.
Well, no, that's the primer, but it's acrylic and it's supposed to be oil-based, so it's bubbling and it's peeling.
Yeah.
And they've done things such as repointing the bricks with the wrong color mortar.
Ouch.
So...
How do you fix that?
Uh, they're gonna have to, it's in the front, you'll see on the walkway, it's like a stark white. It's supposed to either be, one side of the building is tan, one side of the building is red and right in the middle is the white. So they're gonna come and redo that. So, we're trying, we're trying to get them to put people on the job for oversight as it's occurring so that we don't look in one day and all of a sudden find paint splatters all over or the wrong color mortar or skylights leaking due to somebody throwing things on the, on the glass blocks. So, but they have been responsive. They did address the joist repair in the children's room that was an ongoing issue for three years and that was done well. So they've been really great about that. We, so where did we think we have the skylight repaired? What they did was they removed quite a few of the glass blocks and then got kits, kind of like the tiles, the mosaic tiles for the tiffany room. The company that made them no longer makes them, but they had a stockpuddle of them. So we were able to get 10 and put those in and then we're gonna get more because they wound up using all 10 due to cracked areas that they found. So that's going well. We also have, you know, replaced the lighting with the LEDs, which is working out well. We are in the process, starting today, of repairing and replacing faulty sprinkler caps in the, throughout the library. There are 59 of them that we're addressing. We have chill repairs coming up. We're gonna repair two of the air handler, oh no, that's the air handler, sorry. We're gonna repair two air handler units this year and two next year. Workforce Housing Group repaired the elevator. So we're, we're moving along in a positive direction. Things that we are going to pay for from the 2015 bond include the difference in the security system that the village wasn't able to cover. So that's about $16,000. About $3,300 for emergency lighting that was faulty and the air handler units. The sprinkler head replacement is going to be about $12,400 and we will be painting that program room in the spring because with all the damage to the ceiling and the walls, it needs to be done, hasn't been done in 20 years. So Larry's gonna give us a painting contact for that. So that's it for the building issues. I would also like to thank you for your increase in our book budget, for the ebooks last year of $10,000 because it's really made a tremendous difference in our statistics, which was really, can't tell you how more.
I was talking specifically at, at the ebook circulation. I think going back to 2016, 2017, we circulated 1,795 items. In 2017 to 18, that fiscal year, we circulated 3,793. And the first eight months of this fiscal year, we've already circulated 4,334 items. So I mean, it's definitely, the, the increase in the money there is really helping provide the materials that people want. And it, it just, the ebook circulation has been going through the roof, especially in the last, I'd say, five months. It's just really been, been going up, it's wonderful. Part of that could be due to the ease in getting there from the library app, which is something else we started that app. And you can find everything you need to do in just one, one shopping, which is wonderful. You sign in with your library card, make requests, easily borrow things and pull up your barcode and just with your phone and have it scanned into the library and check books out. It's wonderful.
When you get the ebooks, how long are they?
They're out for two weeks. And actually, there's a little tricky thing with that because when you set up your account, you have to tell people, you say that you have to choose between seven, or seven days or 14 days. And so some people, you know, sometimes mess that up. But it's, you get, you get them for 14 days.
And other things like, you know, like there's, you guys have an unbelievable collection of like DVDs. Like is that, that's something that you see like less people using? So I don't, a lot of people don't even have DVD players anymore. And like, it seems like ebooks are taking over some of that. Like is that...
Right. Well, you know, funnily enough, I mean, it was sort of going down. We had a big spike in DVD lending after we brought them out from behind, when people could actually start browsing. So that really helped a lot. But then it started, it was starting to go down, but it's been actually going up again a little bit. I'm not exactly sure why. We do have a lot of streaming services that we also offer. Catopee, you can get podcasts.
I gotta say, Catopee is fantastic.
Yeah, I just told you that. I found out about that through Mark.
Yeah, I think it's like, are you, is this part of the library services? Or do you actually have to pay something for the...
This is, this is part of, the increase that we have here for, that under, where it says Westlinks, that required increase that we have that's our payment to other libraries, that's part of, paid for, that's part of what's being paid for there.
But is it volume related? Or is it just that you have a portal?
That, that one, they limited, they limited it to five per person. So I'm trying to think, I think what they do is they just set up, they set out a budget for it and then it doesn't really matter who's using it.
I understand.
It's 10, oh, it's 10, sorry, yeah, 10 items. I don't understand what it is. We don't have to take time to explain it, but someday explain it to me.
Catopee?
I don't know if I want to.
It's selling Netflix.
Now the film strike is different. If you're looking for things that are like from the Hollywood Golden Age, things like Criterion or Janus Films or things like that, that's on Catopee. And you can't, it's very hard to find it anywhere else.
Right.
If at all. And it's free.
It's absolutely free. And you can set it up if you have a Roku or Apple TV. And you don't have to watch it on your computer. You can actually watch it on your, on your television screen at home.
It was so simple.
Yeah, so you just log in.
I have to get the pen.
Okay.
And I want to pull up there. A plug in for one of next month's programs. Oswaldo Cotto Chang, who was one of our reference librarians, part-time until he left to get a full-time job, is coming back to do a whole program on e-reading and... And anybody who has questions, check your Constant Contact for the date that he'll be here in, in March. And feel free to come and learn about all the downloadable.
He'll be presenting it as a PowerPoint presentation, but then afterwards, he's going to be available for questions and I'll have extra staff there as well so that we can actually help people with their devices. So just, everybody has to bring, you know, the device. You should, you need to have your library card and know your PIN. And, and if you want it like downloaded to a Kindle or something, then you need to know what your Amazon account information is so, because you're gonna need to log into that at some point. But we'll make sure to walk you through the entire thing and set you up and, you know, send you on your voice so you can use it without it at home.
We're renting out every part of this building.
Six in the stairway.
Could you talk, or someone talk about the, the only thing that is maybe not clear is bond anticipation.
So are we gonna look for...
Sorry, we got distracted by the...
Go on, that's the next question.
Okay. You know, because there was an increase to the debt service line of 14,000, I wanted to address that. There was an accounting change. We used to, the past, it was one line, it was a transfer to the debt service fund. And what our auditors recommended, what required us to do for the subsequent year was to only transfer the monies that were to pay the bond as a permanent financing. And those that are the bond anticipation note, because that's not classified as a long-term debt, not to pay it through the debt service fund and make a direct transfer from the operating fund. So the one line goes up, you know, dramatically and one goes down dramatically, but the net difference is just the increase in, in the debt service. So when you look at the increase, I think it was 29,000 on the one line and the increase in the...
That's what, 14,805.
The net difference is the 14. And then it was just like, oh, that's, you know, I didn't want it to be a surprise. So what I did was on the second page, I did itemize on the second page there what the current debt service is, the items that were bonded right now to the, for the library. So what really pushed it up in this past year was the 2018 borrowing. It was for various library repairs. So the first debt service payment would really be this coming fall. And that would be the 10,000 in principal plus the interest. That's almost 13,000. And because the interest rate on the 15,000 went up because of the past year, interest rates have gone up from, for borrowing, a little over one, now it's a little over two. That's a double. The net difference was a total of 14,000.
Library repairs, is that what you're talking about? When you were talking about all the various repairs going on right now?
Right. Things that we can't cover with our regular repairs and maintenance.
We've got all the window work going on. Isn't there a lot, aren't there a lot of window cells?
There will be.
Being cleaned up and painted?
Uh, yes. And that actually, we don't have a person yet because that's going...
It's gonna go through our, our construction manager that we hired to do these smaller jobs. So that hasn't, that hasn't really gotten kicked off just yet.
Oh, it looked like there was some stuff going on.
Well, that's another, that's another issue where Rosemary came in one day and found somebody, you know, spackling with plastic and, from here in construction who works for Workforce Housing Group and they're not supposed to touch our windows because they, it's the wrong kind of honey.
Yeah, for sure.
Right. So that's why, when you look in front of the library right now, between the, the speckles, you know, on the ground and the white acrylic primer and the windows, it's gonna look that way until spring and we can start.
I'm really happy to hear that the railing is supposed to go back to green.
Yeah, and that's the thing, they painted it green. I said, but the color hasn't been approved yet. And they said, well, this is the color we were told to use. I said, but I'm sure the color wasn't approved because we're going to these... And sure enough, it hadn't been approved. So they had to do a different color. So they painted white over the old green. And the primer was the green. It's, it's just been, you know, so I mean, now it has to all be stripped off because the primer they're supposed to put out is supposed to go out of plain wood.
Workforce doesn't say...
Going back to green, but the right green.
They, well, the problem has been is that there really isn't, they have five properties or so in Yonkers that they're working on. And when there's a little downtime there, they send people over to the library and they say, "Go do this." But...
It's not a, it's not a plan.
It's not, it's not a plan and, and they don't let Rosemary know, "Oh, by the way, we have to close off." It's the one way because we're gonna be...
They show up on a, somewhere free.
Exactly.
Whoever it is.
Whoever it is.
Whoever it is.
There's no supervision.
Very minimal, you know, with a lot of these things, yeah. And the, the, these are the wrong word. In truth, they're painting things before they're repairing walls. And I mean, it just is really, it's been very, very difficult. Yeah, they seem to have somebody who's now paying more attention to our building is on top of everything, which is, is for better.
That'll be helpful, hope for the future.
Right.
This is a really new relationship. And basically, it's been considering where it's been. It's been knowing where, and they are responsive.
And John Warren is very responsive. I mean, if, if there's an issue, Rosemary shoots him, you know, email. I'm sorry. And, and email. And, and he made sure to contact the appropriate party to get the work stopped or whatever it means, or send somebody over there.
So it looks like the only, the only little request that isn't kind of accounting related is held care for the half-year. So I assume that's the person that you were talking about earlier? Because not before a full year.
No, it, what it is is we are anticipating, one of my, one of the folk libraries entirely at some point during the year. And so we thought that, you know, to, to, to... There's a tiny chance he won't, there's a chance he'll do it before the first half and before the half-year's over. So we just thought, we'll ask for half a year just so that if he does go, then it won't be such a surprise, much of a hit.
Yeah, so there's two components to, there's two components when an employee is retiring like this. One is a payout of unused sick time. That is not specifically being budgeted in the operating budget because that's a, really a non-recurring, it's a one-time only. So that will be done through what will be recommended as a budget amendment when the retirement takes place. There's sufficient fund balances to handle that or contingency or whatever is recommended at the time. But the, the health insurance policy here, which really just represents half a year, which is the 15,000 here, that, that's for a new person coming in. The existing person will continue with their health insurance. New person coming in will be a new policy and that'll of course be a recurring. This is only a half a year's worth This is only a half a year's worth because that's when the retirement is anticipated. So we'll be having the same conversation next year to get the other half. And it all depends on...
Single family.
We may not be having that conversation.
We went with the family rate to guess.
Be the most conservative.
Yeah. If they're single, then we won't worry about that.
Since the person hasn't even been identified yet, it's... So anyway.
So the increase that you're really asking for is really the four thousand five, two fifty-one. I broke out a little summary on the bottom, how much was salary and benefits.
Those little tiny things.
Which is kind of out of the library's control, you know.
It looks like five hundred supplies and is really what you're asking for.
And some miscellaneous, exactly, right, yeah. I did increase that longevity a little bit because I had seen we were a little bit over this year. So I did increase it.
And I think we have one.
That's her, two years.
Oh, she's like...
Not two years, okay.
We're still above the current budget. We hadn't increased it for a while, so.
Oh, wait, no, it's Carol.
Carol.
No, no, she, she is, so we have...
Carol.
Okay.
Okay. So I had the lecture.
So the first two are the increases that are part of the salary increase?
That was in contingency in the current year and was moved over to pay the increases that were approved earlier.
Anticipated, right. Yeah, the two percent that that person...
The West Link is a set amount, two thousand six hundred, little increase of... Yeah, that's their required increase to libraries in their system.
Correct, right. I want you to space on volume, but that's our, that's our increase.
Yeah, our increase will be that.
And you think it's well worth it?
I think we get a lot, we get a lot, yeah.
We really, we really...
The computers are great. I think the wifi, public wifi is great. I think canopy is fantastic. Put more.
And also the interlibrary loan.
Oh, and that's catalog, catalog, all of that stuff is there, yeah.
It's a, I mean, it's a classic shared service. So it's kind of hard to reinvent that unless you're a monster city that has a large library. That's not the case.
No, we definitely got one.
So is, is, is it a company, is it a private company that oversees the whole Westchester library system? And they, and the system hires them? Or is it part of a public employee's creation?
I'm not sure how, I mean, basically, the Westchester library system, I mean, it's called Westlink, and I'm not sure what that stands for, so maybe that's the thing. But it is the organization that run, that coordinates all of us.
Yeah, it's a cooperative group. I don't know the exact organization of it, but it's like, it's no different than Bosse's. Similar idea where, again, an organization set up for purposes of sharing.
And then they could hire various consultants and groups to help them because otherwise it would be...
And we pay a cumulative their budget, but that's the fee and we get charged.
Are they in White Plains or are they at the school? No, they're in, in Cherrytown on Taxer Road.
Oh, really?
So you don't have...
They're in Cherrytown on Taxer Road?
It was really Elmsford.
Is it Elmsford?
I think it's Elmsford, yeah.
Oh, as you go down, as you go down.
Really?
Yeah. They used to be in Cherrytown off of one nineteen and then they moved. Just before you get to one nineteen, the building on the right.
All right, huh, okay.
So you're not looking for any increase in books or ebooks?
We see, we, I think we're fine with what we had asked for last year. Again, this year, I think we can, we can work with that. I think that's, that's fair.
The other thing that I really like, and I don't know how you guys, I guess it's through the friends, but I was able to make use of the museum pass.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Really, a great one.
Yeah.
There were a couple museums missing that I'd like to see.
Well, now they offer passes. So that, that, it depends on the museums whether or not they offer passes. So it's, and that sometimes changes too. So you may suddenly find out that a museum offers a pass and we don't have it because they didn't what we asked.
Well, you want to, I can email Sarah Cox and ask her to have, I don't know who's doing the museum passes at this point. Is Gina doing it? Okay, and I can...
The pass might not be high enough volume, but I mean, I don't believe, do you have a Whitney pass? I don't believe so.
But I don't believe they offer it because I, actually, when I was there earlier this summer, I asked and they didn't. So I thought it was, yeah, I got that one.
Yeah, that was the nice one.
One, one interesting thing, though, that we are in process of implementing is the system is to be able to reserve the passes online. So you'll be able to see what's available. And it will be a rolling, right now, we say you can reserve them a month in advance. So basically, we've been creating out the month's calendar. And as it gets towards the end of the month, you know, reserve them for a couple of weeks in advance or a week in advance. Now it's gonna be a rolling thirty days in advance. And you will be able to see, you know, see what's available online and reserve it like that. So that will be, that's coming up in the next couple of months.
That's one of those, some people know about it, but a lot of people don't know about it. So that's one of those great services.
Put it in your mayor's letter.
You don't want everyone using it. Always watch every...
I'm willing to sacrifice.
Well, just tell your friends. If you tell two friends, anyone tells your friend, that'll go a long way.
And Mark will still have a shot then.
Well, I think this is, I mean, everyone knows I'm a big fan of libraries, but I mean, it's... And if you want to read a good book about libraries, there's a very popular book called The Library Book. And it's a true story about the Los Angeles library and the fire that happened. But you learn more about libraries in that book than you ever thought you would know and in an interesting narrative fashion.
We are absolutely now buying places. Everybody thinks it's a burning place.
And we've had a fire too, so I mean... No, I don't mind, but... Public institutions that, you know, define our country. And it's, it's a really important place for people here and everywhere.
Well, that's why I'm really happy that we can offer because we didn't spell out all of the, as you know, the meetings that we have in the chickeny room or in the library. I mean, it's not just that we wouldn't rent the space out, but it's also, I mean, as you know, all of these committees, we've also had groups come to us and say, I want to set up a support group for women who are reentering the workforce. So they need periodically.
Oh, and do we still have the people who read the Greek?
No, they, they moved off. They moved off. We had a group of people who wanted to study Greek, you know, or like Homer and the original Greek. And there was just like four people that needed a place to meet. And, you know, you don't have to buy coffee. You don't have to worry about, you know, people kicking you out. You don't have to worry about people being loud next to you because you have a quiet space to, you know, to have these meetings. So it's just really, it's nice if people have that.
Well, we appreciate you guys basically keeping a fly on us. I'll vendor five hundred dollars and...
Mark's canopy.
Go Mark.
So the PIN is just my phone number?
The last four digits.
I try logging in, I'm like, my PIN, my library card.
The tricky thing about that is it's the last numbers of the phone number that you had when you got your library card. If you don't, if you don't have your landline, it probably is probably still there.
Probably is, yeah. And that's why I just got my email and have to renew my library card.
Every year, we ask people to check this to make sure that your contact information is still current.
I can update my phone number.
Indeed. You can get the free pass to the unpretended museum. What's that a deal?
Storm King.
The Storm King.
You have Storm King.
Oscar Bell is another one that we started off with.
Oh, Oscar Bell.
You have to compare to look at the...
What's the app called?
The app, it's called Westchester Library System. If you go to the app store and look up Westchester Library System.
Awesome.
You'll find it there.
There's something new every day. Yesterday Greg taught me something, today you guys...
We may have learned something about the DPW.
I learned about...
They have trucks.
Electronics recycling.
Trucks. They're part of the library, kids touch them. They go to the library and touch them.
Touch a truck now in kind of the Me Too era sounds funny. Like you have...
We should just truck day.
No, 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 don't, don't kill, it's a great name.
She, I don't know.
I'm sure you did it when you were on Second Avenue, but it's first...
I think we had.
All right, so...
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much for all your hard work for the year and keeping our library up and running.
And do you mind if we pass along the compliment that you told me the other day when I met with you about that you just so appreciated working with Brenda?
Yes, thank you. My pleasure.
Doesn't often get complimented.
You know, I look at these, you know, these budgets and my eyes spin. And then we just sit down with Brenda, she goes through them online and I know we figured out where something needed to be...
They work on library, I work on the budget. So they just verbally tell me what's going on.
I might, I might pull up that.
And that's maybe, yeah, you have to choose.
You go to the website, but once you get canopy, you download a canopy app and then...
I just had it ready. I thought I had in the library, I had the secret PIN. Now I can... I did another meeting with you, I was still listening.
You know, and if that doesn't work, just call the library. I think they could, if the search does, they can reset your PIN back to a default, to the default of whatever's on your record and...
Perfect, I'll try it.
Do that over the phone.
I'll try that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So yesterday, yesterday, Greg taught me about electronics recycling. Anything that's plugged in, we make an appointment, they come on Thursdays and they have to plug it in.
He does let them know.
I think there's... But not phones, right, not all the phones. Old phones also?
Phones go with the camera.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
All some phones.
Old phones, yeah. That's why I love the...
You have textile recycling, all sorts of recycling.
Just like, you know, tell us which side it is.
I think you know what I just found out? That, you know how, there was an article about Amazon using that plastic mailers in their boxes. So, and, and all that kind of plastic stuff, obviously, can actually go into the plastic bag recycling down supermarkets.
Oh, really?
But what I didn't know is you have to cut the label off. The paper label is what contaminates. So before you put the Amazon mailer in, you just cut the label off and then everything else go in with...
With paper?
No, it goes in with your...
Plastic.
Plastic bags.
Okay.
So it goes to the supermarket.
Okay.
With the actual...
Just take the label off.
The envelope is totally plastic and it's of the type of plastic, it's a soft plastic.
Right, so it's like your dry cleaning bags, those kind of things.
You can't open, you need a...
Well, yeah, that's true too. Chainsaw.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm always dropping off mounds and plastic stuff. Or wherever. So, it looks to me like the biggest thing on here is the recurring paving offset bonding. So basically, we're taking out the recurring item from, that we've been bonding and returning to the regular budget. Yeah, so, let's see. Where to start? Yeah, so the paving item that's in here, that, you know, that's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. That was what we started doing there last year. Yes, last year was the first year, right. Instead of having a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of paving annually and borrowing for it, we talked about the concept of putting in fixed amount. There's more if you need it. Alright, thanks. And so last year was the first installment of that, thirty thousand. If everything goes well and all of this budget stuff balances out, we'd like to see this thirty thousand included in here and... We were getting to ninety, was there? Well, I think we were shooting for one twenty in the long run. But again, well, every year we have to make a different decision. But that's what the plan was, so, so that's that. That's not an increase that we're asking for. This is kind of a carryover from last year. It's kind of a best practice thing as well, I think, because it's, it happens every year. It's like putting the police car that we replace every year in the budget is supposed to be... Exactly, yeah. And again, it, it goes to your longer-term commitment to infrastructure and all of that and, you know. Yep. Which I think people appreciate. But that looks to me like, it doesn't look to me like there's a, it's not like Greg's asking for a whole bunch of new things here. If I have, yeah. I see, I see really nothing. I see getting rid of the streetlight maintenance and I see adding the paving, the two things that are...
Can I ask you about the streetlight maintenance? We don't need to maintain the streetlights now, do they?
The maintenance has drastically dropped. And the last few problems we had were Kinet problems.
So I have to, I probably know the answer to this, but there are two lights I know all the time, west end of Harriman that, I always think are burned out, but they're not, but they come on at ten o'clock. Or nine, they come on late. They come on several hours after the other two, other lights up and down Harriman.
That's a four-piece sensor, that's...
So do you need those pole numbers or...
Email is a pole number.
I just got to walk past it.
And we'll change the sensor.
Yeah, I just...
You love it when problems get solved, like...
Yes, just solve the problem.
You solve the problem.
And actually, Kinet has energized two lights in a row for a long time.
Thank God.
Yeah, Kinet re-energized, or energized two of the poles recently because I got a thank you email.
Yeah, they did the one on...
Circle Drive, yep.
And there's one other one.
Oh, still they didn't do it yet on the one on RG Avenue West?
Well, there's three on RG Avenue West and there's three on Hudson Avenue West. They haven't done yet.
At Hastings Park, the pole that's been lying down on the ground for...
Horizon finally.
They took it, right?
Just discussed that the other day.
We talked about it.
Called again.
And they can't? It's been there since March.
I can't believe it. They haven't, they haven't done the final wiring connection, but the pole's there.
At least they know where it is.
Verizon, they had to put the pole up, but they're the last one to put the wires up. Kinet has to go first, then cable, then Verizon. That's the way it works.
So I had a question.
No, it was just funny because we were just talking about, and Greg's called them again. We've been talking to him since December, I think, or even earlier.
I almost drove him.
No, no, a long time. No, a long time. I did a, I did a...
Someone drove into it, didn't they?
I did an annoying follow-up in like December. Yeah, that's what I was thinking of, the follow-up. Yeah.
Did it drive into it or did a tree collapse on it? I forget which one it was.
That was a tree collapse. Came because there was a water break there.
That's right.
And we couldn't repair the water break because of the pressure reducing valves or relief valves, excuse me. And when that finally finished, we got a water break done, Verizon forgot about it.
Wow, it was there a long time.
So I had a question for Brenda.
Oh.
Hi Brenda. When, it will relate to you in a minute, but just wanted to... When the, there's a line item for tree commission for replant monies in lieu of replanting.
Right.
Where is that budget line?
It's a trust and agency. So those monies, when someone pays, like a fine, you mean?
No, not a fine, it's like, they have to do a replant, but they can't, so they pay money in lieu of replant.
It's still...
It's probably the same thing. I don't, I think there's only one account.
There's only one account?
Yeah.
Purposes eventually for new trees and stuff like that. That's, I mean, the purpose for the replant is to enable trees to sell. Else in the village, that's the way. Okay, that's good. So what, how this comes to Greg is because we were talking about with all the work on the Main Street trees, we're trying to find what kind of program could we have to get, to keep them watered and what that would cost. Remember that?
Yeah.
Those questions. So is any of that reflected in this budget or how would that...
Not, not at this point, no. We have, we've gone through a bunch of different scenarios of exactly how we're gonna do it. There's still money in projects that we can pay for those initial installations plus the work up at the aqueduct as well. But we've explored a few different things. We may, the short answer is we're not forgetting about it. I know Greg's put a plan together. I challenged him with a different thing that was part of it that included the possibility of additional plantings on Main Street that also need to be watered in conjunction with beautification committee's request. So there's a few different moving parts that aren't settled just yet.
So would it be equipment and man-hours or would it be a contract that's gonna try to get at?
Yes. But yeah, that's the question.
Something that's flexible, that I don't have to really be focused on. And there is, you don't have to do water it mindlessly when it's been, you know, really rainy, but you do have to water as soon as it starts to get dry and hot, that kind of thing. So it's a little bit more smart management, I guess. Yeah, that's good.
That's the plan.
Because I'd hate to see all this stuff that, you know, we're not crossing last year. Lost them all.
Well, it was when they were first installed.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so it was the summer before.
Summer before, yeah.
Well, while those questions, can I ask about the grate that's not, that there are cones on one of the Main Street new trees for the grading?
Amazing, that grate is being delivered tomorrow.
Really? It's because I asked now that it's coming tomorrow?
You should have sent me a check and then called her tomorrow.
Was that the one that was broken?
Okay.
Yes.
No, no, this is the one on the south side.
No, but...
I should drive it up.
That was never, that was never driven on.
Okay, so, so here's what happened.
Okay.
All the grates were installed.
Yeah, right.
And then someone in front of the recreation department drove over it, as I think I reported to you.
Oh, gosh, yes.
We, we immediately ordered a new grate. It is coming in as we speak, tomorrow. In the meantime, we took a grate from a different location and moved it to in front of the recreation center because we had the tree lighting going. So the, the important people in this village made that decision. Get that grate put in front of them. In North Side of the street.
It was triage.
The grates are great, but I have to point out, if I may, is that you'll probably, someone's gonna have to spend time. I don't know how it's done, if there's a volunteer program or if what, but the grates will collect trash.
Right, so you have to somehow reach in.
So you have, there's gotta be a way to, you know...
We knew that and it's, it's gonna be something that Greg will have to deal with.
Is this something when you're not, when you're not watering your, a fall, a spring and fall?
The grates waiting, you clean the grates.
Right.
Hopefully, it's not too much, but, but it'll have to be dealt with.
It's a good thing they're in sections because...
Yeah, you lift them up, right?
Eight hundred and sixty pounds.
There were two there, right?
So four.
Oh, four.
Excuse me, three. No, no, there's four.
Each one weighs how much?
So twenty and forty.
Oh, my, it did that? On the way to the train.
Yeah, actually, the weight of these, eight sixty.
Oh, right.
So...
Out of my four.
Yeah. It's turned pounds, not two hundred, you know, fifteen.
Two fifteen.
Two fifteen, exactly what I weigh.
Men's class.
Yeah. So same as a grate.
It's great.
How does it feel?
How does it feel?
It's great. It makes you feel great.
So I had someone stop me.
Okay.
Someones, two people in fact, who stopped me and chatted my ear off, and I was, it was a rather painful experience. No, because of the subject matter. Subject matter. About, they're concerned for public safety on Main Street with, because of ice.
I know. I got it three or four times.
Oh, you did already?
Yeah.
Because of what?
Because of the ice and snow, and the shoveling on Main Street, and the, it's, it's every year, but it's...
I actually thought after this first storm was pretty good. And I walk up and down now each day. So, I walked up tonight, it was actually...
It was good.
It was perfect. I mean, other than it was starting to melt, and the parks were starting to freeze, but it was perfect. It was down, everything was down to the pavement where I walked, so.
The response on Main Street from the property owners is getting better.
They're complaining more. They're complaining...
They're complaining to her not to use.
Well, the, the shoveling people are complaining to me, as well as the people who wish it were shoveled. So I hear it from both.
Yeah, I got the snide comments that, you know, hey, now we're going to have to, you know, clean it with a, you know, get down with a brush and water as well. No, you don't have to do that, is what I said, not yet.
And then the word will freeze.
But to me, it's, you know, I, I read, as you say, go to any other community and see what, see if they shovel their sidewalks, and the answer's no. So it's...
But we pay more taxes than anybody.
That's what I...
I also tell them, I say, challenge that. Look at your village's taxes.
Right.
Well, that's all to the school.
Yeah, but taxes, well, I mean, also, you know, unfortunately, the reassessment really hit the...
Well, that's the same people.
Very hard. And the downtown quadrant, not just the downtown quadrant.
I mean, I, believe me, I'm not making fun of them, because it's a, it's a real concern, and I always thought that...
Enterpriseing person would organize and...
Yeah, that everybody would organize and hire one company, and you'd get five or six stores in one block, and you hire a company to come and do it. And nobody would pay an outrageous amount. But nobody has heard my idea, or paid attention to it, so...
Did you ever talk to Nick about that?
I don't know. Maybe the next time you see somebody complain, you can say the same thing.
But I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, right?
Well, yeah, I know, I've done it, you know, enough times, to every chamber that's ever been here. But, I mean, just, they could start it on their own. They don't need a chamber. It's like, hey, you want to do it with me? Hey, you want to do it with me? Okay, let's do it.
I know these people that do it with their driveways, that they just have the same guy come, three or four places.
Yeah, exactly. So, I don't know, talk it up, folks, because...
It's not going away.
It's not, we're not going to do it publicly. It's just, every time you do the numbers, I mean, great to do it again. How much does it cost in equipment and labor to take that on again as a village?
Well, we're talking about just Main Street now. We're not talking about all of...
Right, but then it's why not Broadway? Broadway's horrible. It's horrible to try to, you know.
Well, but, look, I mean, there's, there's multiple prongs to the whole, to the whole thing. I mean, obviously, if there's a serious request about anything like this, we would have to study it. But the, but there's two prongs. There's, there's manpower.
Yes.
Which clearly has been reduced since the last time we maintained the sidewalks.
I know.
And, and the equipment as well.
Yes.
You know, it's not just having a bunch of extra shovels around, as you know.
It's also not hurt the rulers that it was, we didn't want to buy one piece of equipment. It's the manpower that's much more...
No, it's true that we didn't buy a particular piece of equipment that year, but it's...
We did buy, but you also didn't have...
That wasn't why...
The decision wasn't made for, for a $70,000 tractor.
Exactly.
Well beyond that.
So I just, it's an ongoing thing, and we just either need better communication, or, you know, some, I don't know what we need. It's too bad.
Well, I mean, likewise, like, the only thing I could see is, there's an argument, there's a public safety argument that I can see on Main Street, because I'm going to exclude Broadway, because that's generally walkable, and except when the snow is three feet high and people are walking in the street. But I can see the, the argument, you know, there are a lot of people, there are reports and people slipping and falling on, because of the slope.
Actually, I fell on riverbed the other day. Black ice.
I got, I got...
No sidewalks, really.
Exactly. And walk, like the water drain.
No, I know, I'm just saying, there's no sidewalks.
I'll assume.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
As I read the...
That's Brenda over there.
Yes, the demographic of Irvington is getting older.
And I thought it was getting younger.
No, it's getting older. We saw that in the comprehensive plan, that chapter.
I would actually challenge that.
Really?
If you look at just half Moon North and South, they said 75 families with children under the age of five.
Wow.
Yeah, 75 families, that's a lot.
But the, those senior citizens are living a long time, so, I don't know.
It was in that demographic analysis that we got in the comprehensive plan, so maybe it was...
Too much healthcare in this country, that's why.
Okay, better chance.
Oh, God, here we go. Here we go.
Anyway, yes, anyway.
Get a, get a pillow.
How unreasonable would it be to, to imagine, I mean, is this something, again, I hate to always come back to, is this something that can be contracted out? You know, because you don't need the labor, you don't need the machine, except maybe, I mean, this year, we've only needed twice this so far, right? I mean, how many, or how many real snowfalls have we had?
We, we, we've had nine.
That really required...
Nine occurrences where we've responded with...
Something.
A full salt thing. I think there was two where we had to plow, two or three when we used plows. But we've had multiple on top of that icing problems. We have, that happens every year.
Oh, today was?
Depends on the weather.
But what is that, what about putting your two ideas together, Connie and Mark? Like, if we're talking, think about contracting, what would it cost to contract out to take care of Main Street, and then ask businesses, they could really benefit from economies of scale if everybody bought in?
I think that's exactly a good idea, really. I mean, it has to be publicized, but we have to get a number to understand what it is.
Right, right. But that might be a way to get it done more efficiently, get it done cheaper for the storekeepers than doing it themselves, or getting a ticket because they own. And it's, if everybody else is doing it, it kind of...
I like that.
Well, but...
I mean, it doesn't mean anyone's going to buy it.
No, no, but at least we give them the, we, we can't, they can't still have no idea how to do this.
I think the problem is you have a lot of absentee landlords that, you know, live in Florida, and are like, duh, I'd rather, you know, whatever. You know, I can't imagine that you're going to get...
Well, they're getting, they're getting a regular fine now, right?
Right.
The biggest problem with Main Street, of course, is the slope.
Yes.
I mean, when, when we were taking care of it, it was a full-time job for at least one person. I mean, that, because Main Street, you plow the snow, where you shovel the snow, and then you take that calcium, and you come back 20 minutes later, and you're slick.
And it's all ice, and then it's early in the morning. I mean, when I walk home on Ferris Street, what do you bet, that's all, all that melted stuff?
I'd be very careful walking.
I'm going to. I didn't bring my poles. Anyway, it's, so, so the suggestion that you're making is that we investigate companies that could do it?
Right, what would it cost to contract it out, to just automatically come, like the guy who comes and clears my driveway in every snow. He just comes, Umberto shows up and clears my driveway. And, but, just price it out, and see if there's enough interest for businesses to cover that expense.
It'd be there.
What the business wants?
Like, it's your requirement, you're required to clear in front of your, your building. You will get a significant fine if you do not. Here is a way we can help you figure it out.
Our fines, Jimmy raised...
So who pays who? Do we just make the marriage and off they go?
We made it.
This was an inspiration.
Otherwise, you're managing it.
But the way they're going to, Jonathan, is you figured out how to get Umberto to come to your driveway.
Yes, I know.
You're telling me that a business in, in Main Street is like, she's, I don't, can't think of, you know, it's, to me, it's like, we're going to send everyone a list of five local contractors, I mean...
I was just saying, if we make it easy.
I hear you.
I know, it's just easy.
No, but also, it's much different if you're doing the whole block than if you're doing, just doing, you know, 25 linear feet.
Right, economy of scale, we'll do the whole block. This is what it will cost per business, and you all have to agree here, we're not doing it, then you're back shoveling your own damn street.
Right. So I, I, I would have shied away from that, except that I had made this effort for years to try to get some interest, and always fallen on deaf ears. Now, either you say, like you do, well, nobody cares, but for our, from our side, we want them to care, and we'd rather not find them, we'd rather get it done.
We tried the carrot, like, hey, everyone do it, and now, I think now we have to stick.
That's what that's going to achieve. What we do, yeah, so...
All right.
What do we... Put all that together.
No, a couple of things. You never know what you're going to get at these meetings, so, no, it's good. Keeps us on our toes.
Thank you, Fox and Charles.
Thank you, Forrest. So, anyway, the, the law was just changed, so I think, I think that there's a need to try to, to see if that can work. And, and if you recall, the only mechanism for inflicting pain on a person who's not complying, who wasn't complying, was for the village to do it itself, and then bill them back. And we struggled with the notion that we didn't, ourselves, so we couldn't charge them what it really cost, or would cost a village employee to do it. And then we tried to, to get a contractor to do it, and they were hesitant to charge an excessive amount, which would actually hurt, because they didn't want their, their reputation...
Oh, I see.
Tarnished by being associated with some astronomical bill. You know, it's kind of cutting off your nose despite your face. So, so then, in that case, if the bill's not that big, then sure, they'll just sit back and say, yeah, take care of it, you know, don't need to worry about it. So that wasn't working. So we came and said, can we change the law? The law was changed to allow for the imposition of a fine, but, you know, that has to be adjudicated in a court, which we're happy with. We're, I think that's a, that's an appropriate level of pain to inflict for someone who's going to just be negligent about it. So I think my recommendation process worked for itself.
It seems works. We just started this.
We need to do, we need, we need to, I agree, there needs to be a more organized mechanism for, for first warning people, and, and, which we do on a regular basis. We, you know, Greg reports to us addresses, we, we send warnings, but, but now with the new remedy, if there's a, a single warning, which we, I think we owe that to some, some people to have at least a warning, the next step is, is issue an appearance ticket, and move on from there.
Okay, so let's try that, yeah.
To be honest with you, it's probably 250, but I don't remember.
It's got to be more than the cost, just some...
Yeah, it would, and, and then just having to go to court, frankly, is, is a deterrent. So, but I think that could, that could work. The other, the other idea, the only thing I will say about the other idea is that although economies of scale do have a positive, if it's the village bidding it out and contracting, it has to be done at prevailing wage, and that is a negative, and it might outweigh the economies. So, that doesn't mean we can't be helpful, you know, identifying, I'm not, I don't really feel great about that personally, recommending people, you know, but, anyway, that's...
Again, a couple of the business owners, maybe, who wouldn't be responsible?
To me, that's a Chamber of Commerce thing. If you have someone that's even remotely organized about it, that would be great.
These are, here's five people, and you go, street by street, and, you know, and then it might even be, these three people agree, and that one jackass doesn't, but you know, we'll just do it anyway, and screw old man Jones, you know, in Florida.
Somebody else take the mantle up and try...
I mean, I'll, I can email Nick tomorrow.
Okay.
Just, just for the heck of it.
All right.
For all...
Old child's dry.
Okay.
Tree services, we, we still have care of trees, right?
Care of trees.
Now, do we pay them a consulting fee at all, or, where is that hidden in the table?
On a few occasions.
Does it just come out of occasions?
We've paid a consulting fee, but I would say 98% of the time, they consult just as being our contractor.
All the businesses coming in.
Some, a few instances when they really come above and beyond, I encourage them to send a bill for their time, and, but it's only a few times. They're, they're very cooperative.
Yeah. So, the, the other, there's two other items. You mentioned streetlights already. The county, a few years back, implemented a, not that small, but they implemented a management fee to manage our backend network. So we have seven different locations in the village that have connections to the internet, and they manage the connection of those locations. And the county implemented a $1,000 fee per location, and last year announced that they are not charging that any longer. So that's been eliminated.
Oh, that's seven thousand.
That's the $7,000 WAN, the WAN fee, the wide area network fee.
That's nice, that's nice.
Yeah.
It's like a county mandate, huh?
Yes. A recently implemented county mandate, recently gone. So, so that, the reason that's in Greg's department is it's in the town hall budget, which is under his umbrella, technically. So, he does it all.
He gets credit for it, as much.
So in all honesty, the budget, the budget that you're looking at here has about a $2,000 increase, which you can, which, which is really all he's asking for. The remaining amount that is changing are items that are almost 100% out of his control, or discretionary, like the $30,000, which is...
$70 sanitation overtime CSDA increase. That's very exact.
What's discretionary? You mean the street paving?
Yeah, the $30,000 is your choice to put that in or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I have one, one other question, and this is something that, you know, I bring up all the time. So, we're talking about what the DPW can do to looking forward in terms of all the, you know, climate change mitigation, sustainability topic, you know. And I know every time we come to the capital budget, I'm always talking about looking at the different fleets and see what can be done, what's available, what's upcoming to, to fit in, so that, so that we can, the village can do its part to try to reduce, you know, the carbon footprint of the village. There's a lot of other, there's potentially a lot of other activity. I'm wondering, do you have any training money for staff?
Training money?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's someone, like, whatever your foreman, or someone that shows initiative, who'd be interested. It would make sense to start getting someone specifically focused on what's available now, and what's coming on the horizon in terms of new services, new products, new ways of doing things, that could help with that goal of the sustainability goals, you know, the climate action goals of the village's house. So, I was trying to think about this, because we've talked in the past about getting a consultant, and then it's a consultant for what kind of project. But on the other hand, you kind of need someone like DPW, for instance, needs kind of a heads-up, just to kind of have feelers for what's out there. And so I was thinking about, is, is this a place where training, you know, enhancing expertise in a particular staff member, for instance?
Well, I...
Could be, could make sense.
I think the biggest thing that could happen in the DPW is with the equipment, but so far, the battery or the electric power of these things is, is not up to snowplow strength yet. I do know, we have the traffic guy uses an electric car. That could be done in the future for, you know, maybe...
What about the satellites?
They're, they're, they are workhorses.
Yeah, and well, here's, here's the thing. And I know, you, you had, I know you had a conversation recently with Ed, and Ed and I have talked a lot about this kind of stuff, believe it or not, relating to hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles. And one of the, one of the concerns, first of all, we are constantly looking forward to changing over certain vehicles in our fleet to either hybrid, if it's available, or electric, if it's available. We took advantage of the one vehicle we immediately identified.
Yeah.
Right, and we immediately identified it. It was the type of use that worked, and that was the parking enforcement. The, the other vehicles, you know, we, as we replace them, we, we now see that there are appropriate hybrid vehicles available to replace those. So, so you're going to see police-rated, pursuit-rated vehicle recommended for the police department, as well as a sedan for, you know, maybe another vehicle in that department. We also are approaching the useful life on the water superintendent's vehicle, and that will be hybrid when we change over.
Similar to what, is that a truck, or is that a SUV?
He has a car.
He has a, he has a car, but it's four-wheel drive, so his would be, his would be the SUV.
Yeah.
So, you know, as, as things become available, we, we take advantage of it. The one thing that we hesitate on is that there are, there have been a number of interesting and cutting edge initiatives out in the world to, um, you know, retrofit a pickup truck, for example, to be an electric or a hybrid. And that's interesting. Um, but what do you do when it doesn't work, you know? And I'm, I'm not saying that it's impossible, but if you're, if you're with technology from a company that may or may not be able to service it near where you are, you have to be careful about that.
It's not OEM.
Exactly. So that, and so now you go to Ford for your F-150 that's been modified and they can't fix it. And so anyway, it's just, it introduces some interesting, um, challenges. So, but on the other hand, if two years from now, there's a Ford F-150 hybrid, we're going to be on that. You know what I mean? And, and you know.
It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be interesting to see how it works out in this department.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we're, I'm looking forward to that. And, and I think, you know, that type of thing we, we've been in tune with. It's just that many times, I'll try to say this in a, in a respectful way, but I don't mean you, I mean others, approach us and say, here's the latest and greatest thing, but it's the practicality of it just doesn't, doesn't work for our operation. We need, it needs to, to work on all ends. So we need to be able to service it. It needs to be able to run the amount of time it needs, needs to run. I mean, it's a whole series of, of things involved with that. But for the vehicles where it makes sense, we're going to do it. Um, you know, it, I mean, there's lots of ideas. There's, you know, compressed natural gas, you know, but we don't have the, we don't have the infrastructure for that. We don't have the filling stations for that. Those types of things are, are challenges that we look at, but you know, we look at it all the time.
So one thing I was going to say is because in the next couple of years, the horizon, the, the availability is going to start changing because, I mean, every single one of the major car manufacturers has basically said they're making major commitments to, you know, alternative power vehicles, EV vehicles and trucks. You know, in, in a very short window of time, within the next five years, uh, some manufacturers, they've been said they're not going to have any, uh, internal combustion engines available.
Right.
So we'll see if that happens.
Yeah, no.
It means that the marketplace and the availability of things are going to start changing pretty rapidly at this point.
Yeah. Not that I'm the only one paying attention, but I certainly pay attention to it. And we have other organizations and other people in, that volunteer for us certainly that, that look at that all the time. So.
So it's on the radars?
Oh, most definitely. Yeah, no, absolutely. And look, it's gonna, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost more, but you've been very clear in your past patterns that you're willing to invest to save money down the road or energy in this case and money, but.
For society.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, but you've been clear about that. So, so the, the police SUV is currently being bid out by the West, the County of Westchester as a joint bid. Maybe it'll come back at 35,000 where that SUV might've been 27,000 otherwise. Okay? That's not, that's not scaring us away. Um, the other, the other thing that I would mention from an operational standpoint, and I know you didn't bring it up specifically, but, um, you know, Greg is, uh, is committed to, um, having at least a portion of his sanitation routes be picked up by a one-armed bandit.
Yeah.
We, you know, it, exactly how it gets implemented needs to be worked out. I think he has, you know, he's laid out a lot of different things, but, um, you know, and that's, again, it's not a, it's not a staff cutting savings, but it's a staff efficiency savings. So where, where three people would be on a garbage route, now, now there, there may be one, but it's not going to be the entire village. You can't use a one-armed bandit where there's street parking like here in town, you know? Yeah, right. There's gonna be, there's gonna be logistics about that, but, um, and finally, the, uh, and I, I think I've reported back on this once before. We are moving towards, uh, uh, joining in with the, um, Sustainable Westchester Initiative to have a, uh, sanitation information online and through a portal and through an app. So people can, can see when things, um, are picked up in their particular address. They can identify how things get thrown out. If they're interested in a particular item that has to be thrown out, how does it get thrown out? Or recycled or otherwise. And, uh, the, what we're trying to, we hope this takes hold this year. It's being worked on right now, but hopefully this year it takes hold and by next year we don't produce a printed and mailed sanitation calendar. That's the goal is to go strictly.
I made my award wish.
I like my little calendar.
What, what'll be, what's interesting is that you, you'll, two things you'll be able to do. One is, um, you'll be able to go in to the particular portal. And if you do like a printed calendar for your refrigerator, you can actually print one out specific to your address. It won't be as glossy, but it'll be, it'll still do the job. Uh, or you can call a village hall and we'll print one out and mail it to you for those that aren't capable of doing that. So anyway, that's, but that's the plan down the road. So those are just some additional efficiencies that, you know, we've, we've talked about all the time.
I thought of something when Mark, you were talking, maybe you want to finish, but we, so I forgot what I thought of. Larry, you, you've explained all these, you know, larger energy saving, um, you know, climate friendly approaches that you've got your eye on and you're doing. And maybe this is too small scale to be important, but in a lot of businesses, there are kind of rewards for employees to incentivize them to think of things like noticing ways to save energy on some procedure that you guys do every day. And I'm, I'm thinking of your department more than others because I don't see where, you know, it could happen in Brenda's office much, but I mean, just, just thinking about, it's kind of, you know, you see something, say something, but it's about how you could improve the way you do something to be energy efficient or climate friendly. And there could be some incentives.
Labor savings.
Right. So you could incentivize with some kind of bonus or award or I don't know, whatever employees think of as an incentive. And Larry, maybe you'll.
No, I'm, I'm laughing at Janice's comment. I'm sorry. She said a box of chocolates.
Anyway, I don't know that.
I don't know that we need.
You don't need any incentives. You'll think them up anyway.
This happens all the time.
You think of a way to.
You know, we have a very tight crew.
Right.
And they're.
They're thinking of things.
They're thinking, they're talking and, you know, they'll, they'll come in my office and they'll say, you know, instead of doing, we've been doing this, but we want to do that.
Yeah, okay.
If it makes sense, we usually try it.
Right.
And if it works, we stay with it and, uh, but it happens a lot.
Specifically for energy savings, specifically oriented towards climate friendly behaviors across the employees of this village. And hey, somebody came up with whatever and it was a good idea and it saved X number of, you know.
Well, when you do something more efficient, especially in our department, it, it has a domino effect because it, you're not using as much fuel, as much wear and tear of the equipment. So, I mean, and like I said, that's going, that's a ongoing basis.
All right. Well, put it in the suggestion box of things to think about for the employees. Okay, got it.
Well, I appreciate you basically coming on with the flat budget again.
Thank you.
We appreciate you trying to figure out ways to save money year after year after year. I know you bailed us out a few years. Um, we really needed it. So, uh, you know, and, and, you know, I think that, uh, the, uh, the residents view of the DPW is, is higher and higher than ever. Um, it's the one department that I, not the one department, it's a department that I hear great things about all the time.
These guys were much less tempting when it was like four degrees out. I was totally amazed. I sent you that email and said.
It's because of the crew. We have a, we have a very good crew.
How many full-time, how many full-time, how many full-time?
15.
15?
13.
13.
13.
And how many part-time? Or it depends on the season.
Actually, three.
Okay. Cause they are, they are ever-present. They are ever-present. There's not a day in my life that I don't see a DPW truck of some size or configuration.
Things are going well and, and, uh, I'm proud.
You should be.
We got through that storm last night, picked up the recycling.
I know.
See, wait until I cancel it out. I thought it was impossible.
Yeah, Brian already had it canceled last night. No, kidding.
People asked me and I said it was on, so I wanted to be sure that I wasn't lying.
So Greg, to look back around, have you seen over the last few years, any trend in fall organic waste? You know, we were trying to see.
I have seen the trend.
Is it up or down?
Well, when we first, when we first stopped the leaf pile pickup.
To lose leaves.
The savings there was astronomical.
In terms of your time?
For each year it keeps up. More and more people are putting the leaves out in bags.
Yeah.
And, um, what happens sometimes is, you know, uh, head bags is one thing, but 50 bags is another. So, so we end up picking it up with equipment anyway because so many bags, it's just easier to do it with the equipment. That's a decision we make ourselves, but, uh.
And the total volume is going up.
Creeping up.
Creeping up.
Well, the volume, it went like this, like that, and now it's creeping up again, right? Up to the leaves now.
Yeah, I know.
Get you back out there.
No, we gotta get, maybe redo the village educational outreach.
We did, we did. I mean, it's, uh, I think we thought everyone was on board all the time.
A lot of new people.
Yeah.
Also this year, with a little rain.
Yeah.
We had a tough year with trees. We lost a lot of trees which fell down. And, um, the trees were, you know, this is done on tonnage and of course trees are heavy.
More than leaves.
They uprooted from the wet soils and.
Yeah, yeah, it is. But, uh, we lost a lot of trees, plus there was a lot of private trees. That's got nothing to do with us, but a lot of trees down.
I know. I've lost blood.
Well, again, we, uh, we appreciate all the work.
Very much so.
In general, and we appreciate all the work on the budget and like that you keep the budget in front of mind all the time. So providing service first, but with, with the cost conscious, um, you know, be wanted as well. So we appreciate it.
Yes.
Appreciate it. And I hope you're enjoying your retirement.
I was, I was saying, so if they say that, what should I say? And I guess the answer is I wouldn't know.
So we're that predictable, our joke is like I'm such a dad joke guy. DPW knows what's coming. I'm getting predictable. But, uh, we appreciate it.
Okay.
That's good. Always learn a lot when you come in. We got a lot of things to talk about.
I remember we used to make them every meeting.
You should come on. Now that you're retired, you should come on.
This is the joke that keeps on giving.
The problem with your meetings is you hold them in the middle of the night.
I have the same problem.
One other non-DPW budget item that Larry and I spoke about, uh, and it's.
I heard non-DPW.
It's just something, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but, um, we were just talking about the request. It's, it's probably the biggest request in the budget this year is the second lieutenant. And, you know, my conversation with Larry was, um, I'm not against it in general.
Greg.
It, to me, I'm just not sure of the timing of it. Um, cause to me, anything definitely beyond a year doesn't make any sense and I'm not even sure if you need a full year. So to me, it's almost, should be tweaked timing and just ask, you know, like, cause to me, if like, if it's, if it's a one year, then you've seen everything, you know, every holiday and, uh, you know, everything you could possibly see. And I don't even know if you need all of that. And just for that additional increase, um, the more you cut it down, you know, kind of the multipliers are in effect.
Also, this would be something we're promoting in-house, right? So it's not like it's going to be like a whole brand new world that they know that, you know.
Yes. And I think some of it can be done informally. Hey, this is what, you know, cause he's sergeant already. So it's like, hey, Sarge, this is how I plan this. And then if we, I don't say, I'm not saying, say no to it outright, but maybe it's the last six months or that, rather than almost two years. So that was.
That seems like a good thing to come out.
Something didn't seem right about it. And so Larry and I was kind of, you know, talking out with Larry and, and kind of got it. Was that there at the end? But it was just, you know, and again, I'm not against it in theory. I think it actually makes a lot of sense to have someone be trained, but to me, there's probably a way to do it more cost efficiently. Yeah. Cause it's also just, it's just such a big ticket item. So.
And, and it certainly would have been something that we want to talk about when we kind of get back together and look at the whole big picture here. You're seeing bits and pieces of each department, which is important. So you understand each department, but then you're going to now see how it all fits together. So that's kind of, or that's, or doesn't, yeah.
Did you want to say anything about the, the parking, um, system that you're starting to investigate to, you know, the, the technology that we'll. We need more info.
Yeah, we could even, yeah, we'll get more info and kind of show the demo. Um, but that's just on along the lines of the, uh, it's actually probably going to be during the, uh,
Capital budget, yeah.
It's a comprehensive budget.
A comprehensive plan.
Is that, are you, are you also moving forward trying to get some information from the Sustainable Westchester on the charging stations?
Uh, yeah, well.
How helpful are they is what I'm.
Um, let's, let's just say that I'm not working with Ron Kamen, um, at this point, um, but I, I did have, um, I am following up on the, um, information provided by Tarrytown's vendor that they use, which was sort of through, it was through the New York Power Authority.
So they use, they use EV Connect?
They did, yeah. So, um, I had a, a very good conversation with the gentleman from EV Connect yesterday. Um, I have a meeting on Friday with a local contractor, who would be the ones potentially used to install these. Um, I have the grant program identified through NYSERTA that, that is recommended, which is a $4,000 per head reimbursement.
That's installation or operations?
It's, it's all, everything. It's up to $4,000 for all of that. It may, it may exceed that. I don't know yet. That's, it's, I'm just meeting with the people now. So, um, but the program is there. The Power Authority, I, I've, uh, reached out to them, but, um, my, the indications I have are that the Power Authority has some additional, um, requirements that they lump on to the, to the installed units and that adds to the operational cost of those units. So EV Connect has a pretty comprehensive reporting package, but NIPA has some additional requirements which add money to, to the whole process. So I may not be going through New York Power Authority, but the, the grant is through NYSERTA anyway. So, uh, it seems pretty straightforward.
And EV Connect has done NIPA-based things in Tarrytown and IAN all over. So.
So it's no, it's no different.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
How were they able to give free power though for the first two years or whatever the, just because they saved enough money or?
Well, no, they just, they just chose to do it that way, but, um.
Was that the, the village?
I, I think the village chose to do it that way, but the, um, the gentleman I spoke with from EV Connect is that, um, there, there were some municipalities doing it for free, but he said that basically everyone that he's worked with is not doing it for free now. So, but that's, can be researched, of course.
I don't think it needs to be done for free. You know, that's, that's a nice, nice municipal service, but.
The question I came up with the library board and they were really reasonably receptive to it because, um, somebody on the board has an electric car and is very interested in being able to put it in. Can you limit the hours or does it have to be a dedicated space?
I'll.
You're finding that out?
I'll find that out.
Okay.
It's in, in NIP, I know that you actually have to pay for your space, like in the normal pay station. And then the charge, you do do the charge separately, you know what I'm saying?
Right. Yeah, but we don't have paid, we don't have paid parking anywhere. So.
I just thought it was interesting that.
Yeah.
Page you pay, uh.
It could be your metro noise.
You have to be there kind of like two hours.
I have to get an electric car and I'll take the spot that I can charge while I'm.
But they'll re, they'll reimburse up to, up to eight charging heads. So four different locations potentially. So we have four different locations that we're pursuing. So, you know.
We are?
Yeah. I mean, just to, as a conceptual. So I'm going to be visiting those tomorrow with the contractor.
Can you just.
The aqueduct, the, uh, library parking lot itself, again, nothing fin, nothing final.
Yeah.
Seneca Hudson Park, um, in the, in the parking lot. And, uh, I'm going to at least show them the, uh, the private lot owned by Bazar.
Or as opposed to down closer to the train station.
Yeah, yeah. So the, it, anyway, that, you have to work, I mean, that, that's a, that's a, a long shot, I would say. It's a good idea, but a long shot because we've got to work out, you know, a lease agreement and all that other stuff before that. So, um, anyway, that's.
Okay. Good, good progress.
Yeah.
All right. What's next? Anything else?
Yeah.
We had a few things.
Well, the, certainly the one about, uh, pursuing the dark sky legislation. So my, my question is, uh, at what point do we start working on that? Mary Ann can work on it. But do you want to devote the time to do that now or? Mary Ann can work on it, but do you want to devote the time to do that now, or do you want to push it off as a future priority? So that's essentially what the, what my question is, anyway.
I guess my only thing, I'm, you know, we, if we can take care of the library situation, if they actually, Magic Company actually-
Yeah, that's in the works, yeah.
It looks like where it makes sense is where we could be having zoning changes or new, or large projects coming in, that's where it's gonna make the most sense. So things like the Trent Building, things like changes in zoning on, whatever we propose on North Broadway. Some of these kinds of areas, or the areas that would benefit from it. So I guess what I'm saying is it doesn't have to be done immediately, but it seems like we sort of want something in place before we're starting to get, I mean, I'd hate to see the Astor Buck parking lot go through without this kind of lighting controls in place. So, you know, it's not like today, tomorrow, or next week, but certainly within the timeframe that's closer to next year, I guess is what I'm suggesting would make most sense for the village.
What was the timing on the Broadway's, I mean, I know we have it, we have the personal warranty, we have the contractor.
Yeah, they, they've done an initial draft that's been given to Mary Ann, not, not to you all yet. Frankly, I haven't seen it yet, but Mary Ann's just kept me up to date. So there's an initial draft that went to Mary Ann, Mary Ann had some comments back to her, so there'll be something coming-
We can do it in tangent with, with some of that stuff, as you say, because I think that's, again, that it'll be, there's potential for large building projects there. So, you know, I think it, you know, not that it necessarily dovetails with that exactly, but I think it's, it's a good time to consider that.
Or I think Astor Buck is where we have the largest risk factor immediately. If they, they come in, because that's another rezoning, right, that's going to happen.
I, I've always been interested in this.
No, I mean, I'm just- Oh, I shouldn't have said that?
Well, no, I mean, I, it's gotta be talked about.
No, Mark and others, I'm, Larry, you're asking the question. I, I've been interested in this, just in terms of, of how lighting in, you know, in the downtown, in, in, on Main Street, is, is organized, is, is regulated. You know, there was always a lot of concern, if you remember, when the LED lights went in, and just the nature of those lights. And there was a lot of, I got a lot of emails, I passed on some of them, about how certain communities in New York City have, have affected the lighting, especially in downtown areas, that is still safe, but more, it makes a more positive experience when you are a pedestrian in, in a, I can't even call it a downtown area, so-
They changed the color temperature halfway through the process.
Yeah.
They made it a warmer light.
Yeah, so it's, it's, but that whole issue, that's, that got me thinking about just the issues you brought up, so, you know, you know, I don't think it needs to be next week either. And to me, it syncs with some of the bigger priorities that, that we have. So I think we should put it on that, you know, not far off, but not immediate, call it the midterm.
So it'll be, it'll be, yeah, on, on the 2019, 20 priorities.
My concern, that, my question was just, how do we, when somebody has an idea, how do we sequence it in?
Well, and that's why I tried to outline what, where I was going.
This didn't sound like an emergency, but it's definitely something we do want to move ahead on, and we want to keep aware of these other projects that, that potentially might need us to move it up faster, so I don't think there's-
I mean, we have, fortunately, no one's complaining, but I mean, the whole Bridge Street parking lot lighting project went south, more or less, they decided it was, they'd gotten approved for what I would call, let's call it proper lighting, and then they decided it was gonna be too expensive, so they went back to the planning board for, to, for, not a variance, but to negotiate doing it differently. And because we have, I think one of the problems is because we have no regulation on the book.
Yeah, the planning board, okay, yeah, and so we're-
Yeah, so we should.
We, we can't redo that, so we're now aware, and if there's something like that comes up, we can move in on this, but right now, I think it should, it should follow its natural sequence for the priorities for the next year, as you recounted, knowing that we can always goose it if we need to. Okay, we'll keep it up there.
Which, just to clarify what I, what I wrote this afternoon, which we dealt with, kind of the methodical process of going through things that come up like this, that's, that's not to say that if there's something that's more urgent, that we won't address it immediately, that's not what I meant to say at all. Or I didn't put that part in, which dovetails into maybe the next conversation, which has to do with any sort of feedback or commentary on the school, proposed school project, specifically at Dow's Lane, so you know, I, I think I had reported back from, from Mary Ann that, you know, she encouraged you, if there's something you want to say, to say it, not to worry about process necessarily, but just if there's something you want to weigh in on, go right ahead as a board. So, all I think I requested is if you decide to do that, to just help me craft a resolution that reflects what you want to say, if you want to say it.
Brian, could you just repeat?
My, my understanding from talking to several people that were either on the committee that did it, or the school board itself, you know, they've kind of heard the, you know, discussion now, and, you know, they're looking at other things, so they kind of said, I mean, they told people, like, you know, why don't we, why don't you wait to hear what we say before you freak out? You know, I think some of it is they want to put the money in the bond, so they have to have a location specified. And who knows if they'll be able to find a new one in a couple of months, they have. But they kind of said, they almost said, you know, before, you know, not to me directly, but I was on like a chain where they were saying, hey, before you kind of go ballistic here, and, you know, start a change that award kind of thing, that why don't you hear out, hear what we're gonna say first? And that's, that's kind of where I came down. You know, to me, it was like a wait-and-see almost on it, that's why, I mean, I haven't even frankly seen the entire plan, I haven't looked at the whole-
Well, yes, and that's the point, and I know Larry, I know you're there, listening to my name.
Oh, I'm Larry Longkey.
Larry Longkey, I know you have feelings, strong feelings about this, but, you know, we as a board, you know, often have many public hearings before we get to a decision about something, and we sometimes get feedback from people who just got the last, they didn't get the whole memo, they just read the last paragraph. Also, I've been on the school board, you know, this is, this is, you know, not an easy thing to do, but there's been a process, they got to a conclusion, they are continuing the process, and I can't put myself in the opposite position, if we got a resolution from the Board of Ed about something that we were planning, I don't think we'd be real happy about that.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, if people want to say something individually, say it as residents as well.
And absolutely, people as residents want to participate in the process, but I think we need to have some respect for their process, and if we decide, when we learn a lot more about it, or we see what the final product is, that it's something that really does affect some village interest, you know, that's, that's a different thing.
And, and you know, frankly, where I was more, what's the right word, surprised or disappointed was, you know, Larry and Greg had met with them to talk about, you know, working together on something, I had met with school board president, another school board member, and someone from Maglian Conception Church about potentially doing something on kind of the high school property slash Maglian Conception property.
Related to this?
Related to a, creating some kind of storage area where our DPW trucks and their trucks-
Ah, I see.
And their stor, you know, our storage, their storage, and then, you know, that kind of, then we didn't hear anything. We knew it was gonna be, they were, they were trying to work on it with the bond, and then we didn't hear anything, and then it was just in this, you know, it was just a completely different proposal that we had never heard about. So that was to me, was where I was more disappointed than anything, that we weren't included, but, you know, and you hadn't heard that.
Although, I don't know, I, I mean, you may be disappointed about it, but I'm not sure what, if, if that was presented to us as, as hey, this is an option, I'm not sure what we would have been able to add to the conversation, because we would not have been included, and we're not included in this particular facility-
Right.
For joint purposes, you know, the meeting, the meeting that, that I had was focused on exploring joint possibilities. Which, by the way, is, is very smart. If there were a solution, that would be a very smart way to go. And maybe, maybe there will be a solution down the road, but, and working together might even help that, but you know, at this point, I, I don't think I could have commented on where they want to put their facility, I, I mean, personally, me. You may want to as a board, but I, I don't know what I would have added to that.
I don't feel like I, I have fully heard, I mean, maybe that's just carrying on to what you just said, Brian, of all the points of view and the reasons for them, in order for me to really say, and I've put that all together, I've analyzed it, this is where I come out. I, I just don't feel like I'm well enough informed. The only thing that interested me was the question of the SECRE review. Just, you know, in general, I think we, we, we should support that kind of review if we think it meets the standards. But taking a position as, as a board, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I can't imagine, I can't quite imagine the letter. The letter would have to say, I hope you look at all the points of view, and take them all into consideration, and do a careful analysis.
And we expect them to do that anyway.
And that would be like you said, I'd feel a little funny if we got a letter from the board saying, look at all the points of view, listen to the public, think about-
About continuing or something like that.
And like, of course, so I don't know.
They could, just like, we, as I pointed out, just like we can get, we do get others from Dobbs Ferry, for instance, on Stop the Mercy.
Yeah, I know.
As they have concerns.
And we weighed in on the Dobbs Ferry project.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Why are most of us are plenty of work, but I don't recall.
But, you know, that, that's, that's a equal to equal, that's a village to a vill, I don't know, it's, something doesn't feel right about it to me. But I, I certainly, you know, we're all independent individuals who are residents of the school district, and I think, you know-
Oh, it's individual.
We can all do whatever we want, but right now, it just, maybe something would change if I learned something else, but I, I, I wouldn't be ready to sign on to, oh, a position, I don't know what that position would be, so that's-
Does it make any kind of sense, we had talked about inviting people to invite somebody from the Michael, or somebody from the board, to just brief us on the process?
Yeah, I'd be happy to hear from them.
I'm not sure, this might be a huge imposition on him, I'm sure he has got a lot of spare time lately, but in the interest of us being as fully informed as possible.
Maybe we could have Chris Harrison come do it, because he's just paid, he's paid to be there. Exactly, anyway, kind of like our Larry.
But on the other hand, we could listen, we could listen, they have, they have time for all these things.
I just think, hearing what I've heard, I think they're gonna have a hard time trying to, I understand what you're saying, Brian, that they have to have a placeholder for the bond.
Yep.
But there's a lot of people who are so upset about this, they've already said they're gonna not move it.
Which to me is like, and this is to me is like one eighth of the bond.
Not even, yeah, it's a small, a tiny component.
But that's what I'm saying, what I'm saying, though, maybe they have to just say, we're taking this whole thing out, and keep the rest of the bond.
That's what I-
And then it's unfortunate, because then they're not gonna have any facilities, and they're, you know, have to replace their trucks three times faster, and all that kind of stuff too, but I, I- What I said was my advice that I gave unsolicited was, I would just kill this thing right now. And to say, we're not considering that location, and if you can find another location, great, but, because you're already, people are gonna be like, oh, this bond? That's the bond for destroying the trees, and it's always playground for the children.
Right.
You know, so I think that that's, that's where it's-
But the problem is it's reached that level in, in a lot of areas.
That, that was the only reason.
The joy is social media, yes, that's what's all over the place. But also, if, if, if Chris was interested in coming here, if we gave him, you know, a hundred percent. But the other benefit of that is that we reach an audience that's not primarily parents, or they're not here because they're parents. So it might be, you know, just another segment of the, of the community who would have-
I think especially if they decide to take this piece out of the bond, they come and say, by the way, this is not in the bond anymore. Because, you know, I, I think perhaps that would be a couple of losses on this piece right now, so if you have an all-the-pack-up plan right away, because it's jeopardizing the entire bond, which a lot of it is important stuff that needs to be done, not which-
So this, so I would encourage, if we're all, we're all saying-
Yeah, it sounds like we're gonna get it forward.
To reach out to Chris, yeah, okay.
See if they want to come present.
Try to get it better in form.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, the timeline that they have on their presentation, and that's all that we have, by the way, is the presentation that they posted online, but is the, and, you know, presentation to the community all happens between December 1st and March 5th, including bond resolutions. March 5th is the Board of Education adopts a resolution calling for the bond referendum and the secret determination adopted by the Board of Education.
Yeah, they have, they don't have a whole lot of time.
But even if it's after the fact, it still might be-
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Yeah, I mean, because it's, it's one of those things, you're like, who did this and all that, it's like, it was eighteen volunteers, you know, so it's like, it's, it's not the-
The committee.
All of people that destroy Irvington or whatever.
Now, people do tend to lead to that conclusion fairly quickly.
Chris Harrison, you know, monument to himself, that's a DPW garage. Except for, yeah, this is all two Ps, Chris Harrison. What are you talking about?
Right, he's gonna put his name on them.
Yeah, the Chris Harrison building? I don't know, it's all, sorry, but anyway. But that's it?
Uh, yeah, you answered the question about-
Letter, and we'll, we'll do a letter-
No letter, and invite Chris if he wants to.
There was another issue, I'm not sure if it's, we need too much of executive session about indemnification?
Should we wait for-
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have that on here, because I wasn't expecting Mary Ann to be here, so.
Oh, wait, or you should have.
So why don't we, yeah, and that's, that issue's been simmering anyway, so I can, I can push that one off. The only other thing is, is just to say that I will work towards scheduling a joint meeting of the planning board and the dodge board related to the proposed Astor Buck parking lot, so, and obviously, when that date is scheduled, which will be far enough in advance, we will make it known to everyone.
Hey, that's it?
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, we have a second.